Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas Mayor Commission Meeting. This will serve as our regular meeting, December the 27th, 2018. And we will turn it over to Mayor Pro temp, Kente'wan Durn, for the invocation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to bring up to our front our invocation. I'm a pastor in our community that has been here for years. He's a pastor in my ward. We would like to bring up Dr. Booker T., Dr. Booker T. Rose of Young Chapel Missionary Baptist Church to give our invocation on today. Thank you so much, Dr. Rose.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's good to be here.
Amen.
And have this chance and opportunity. And I pray that you had a great Christmas and a blessed Christmas. And we thank God for this journey.
Yes, sir.
Let us pray together. Father in heaven, we thank you for this time of... That you have given us, oh God, to come together in this fellowship and knowledge and wisdom, and understanding, experience. And Father God, continue to bless each and every person that's represented here. And Father God, continue to direct minds and hearts.
Yes.
Because of love, because of peace, because of understanding. And God, we know that I will keep them in perfect peace, whose minds still need God, because we trust in thee, we trust in you, but in your way. And Father God, we just ask you to direct their mind and their thoughts for the benefit, for this purpose that they stand in need of, each and every citizen of this city, this Douglas, Georgia. And Father God bless, if thou see fit, and Father God help them to make the right decision, to make the best better. If you do this, Father God, we forever give you name, the praise, the glory, and honor. This we do act in prayer, in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. And all of God's children say amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Rose.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you for all you do.
Next on the agenda, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. As always, we're going to be led by the dynamic Coffee County Navy Junior ROTC. And to lead us in the pledge, it's going to be Lieutenant Torres. If you would, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. As always, it is always good to have our young adults lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. One of the things I always like to tell folks, that our youth are our greatest ambassadors. They are our greatest ambassadors. And just think about this right here. When I introduced her, I introduced her as Coffee County Navy ROTC. She represents all of us, and they do a fine job. Next on the agenda, we have the minutes from the work session, but we've already approved those, so if we would strike item number four. Therefore, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the order of the agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion does carry. The next on the agenda is recognition of winners of the Festival of Lights Christmas Parade. And Ms. Georgia Henderson, the Director of Community Development, will lead us through this.
All right, we're going to ask, since my two liaison commissioners, Mike Neal and Pearson, if you're able to come down and join Mayor Paul tonight, that would be great. And Candace, my assistant, got them lined up. But we're here tonight to recognize the winners of the Festival of Lights Christmas Parade. We know we had some challenges with the weather that caused us to reschedule. Made it a little smaller than it normally is, but thus, we still have some winners, people that put forth great effort. And we thank everyone in the community for their participation in the parade. And before I recognize the winners, we just want everyone to know, we also thank the sponsors, which one is the City of Douglas, the Coffee County Commission, and also the Douglas Coffee County Chamber of Commerce. So we're going to get on with it, because there are several here tonight. We're going to start with our third place winners. And in the small business category, we have the 106.7, the buck. It will be the smallest one down here. All right. This was the excited reindeer in the parade, if y'all remember. Yes, yes. And if y'all would stay up there, we're going to get a group picture of all our third place winners. That's right. In the education category. Can you tell he's in the entertainment business a little bit? Really, man, really, man. Our third place in the education category is the Coffee County Transportation. And third place in the clubs, individuals, and organizations category is Chloe Ornellis. And I hope I said that correctly.
Y'all, Ms. Robson is not here with us tonight, because she's sick.
Okay.
But this was the first Ms. Robson pageant ever had.
All right.
Let our mayor on the end, y'all, winter stuff in center.
I will send a pageant, all right?
All right. Imagine that.
All right. Hold it. One more for safety. Just stay right there. Congratulations.
Appreciate you, Susan.
Okay, we're going to move on to our second place winners in the churches category. That will be Young's Chapel Missionary Baptist Church.
All right. All right.
Congratulations as well.
All right. All right, y'all, champs. All right.
I may have to... This group, they can count it in. I'll take one.
Congratulations, y'all.
Did y'all actually work on it? Y'all just getting up, playing.
Did you work on it?
Pass the roll.
We're going to get individuals, since they have a large group. Because by the time I call them, they'll get all... All right, everyone look this way, please.
Sound right?
She broke the camera.
She broke the camera.
All right, one more.
Yeah, that would turn up bad.
All right, second place in the small business category is Quick Toe Wrecker. Quick Toe Wrecker.
He's a referee. I know. He's a good referee, too.
But he got across the bullies, though.
All right. Good luck. Second place in education, Coffee Freshman FFA.
Congratulations, this is Coffee County freshman.
And in clubs, individuals, and organizations, second place, Deanna Hayes.
Benjamin's in his class.
She's not here?
She's not here, I'm sorry.
I'd say he's a good teacher.
Not here?
Not here.
Y'all go back to the center. In the middle now. All right. Congratulations.
Back again next year.
All right, moving up to first place in the churches category, the House of Mercy Ministries.
All right.
Come here, your face. Congratulations.
All right, who gets the trophy?
Uh, seven. Prayer.
Is my frame up, big cheese? Well, that's photoshopped, you know. First place in small business is Hugging Bones.
That's my place.
She's coming in a different way on your... That's not for you.
Good job. I guess y'all are in a lot of cities, aren't you, a lot of towns?
Yeah, they got one coming up in just...
She just said the best part is Douglas. Yes, of course.
He's got a nice one coming up. What do y'all look like? That's a great of these.
Y'all got some good food, too. First place, education, Coffee High School Drama Club and Coffee High School Art Club. They combined.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Stay right there in the center. Stay right there with me.
Oh, it'll be on Facebook tonight.
Thank you, congratulations, Stan.
Why would let me wear one of my Christmas presents?
I'm buying shirts.
Okay, third place in clubs, individual, organizations, excuse me, is Angels for Orphans. She's pretty chilling.
Wow, she's adorable. Y'all got to pick her up where she could be seen in that photograph now. She is adorable.
She's tiny. She outside was tiny.
You hold the trophies?
Uh, well, let him hold. Would you like to hold the trophy, young man?
He's a dog.
Can you hold on?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. You just give that bitch mouth, she has it smiled down.
Oh, my God, she gonna wave. She knows. That's cute.
That way, baby.
That one first time.
She's a pro.
Wait, wait, I presented last year. And hopefully, we'll be here next year.
That's right.
Because we're painting, actually, on the ten more flags being added.
Wow. God, bye-bye.
Thank you.
This next group is not here tonight, but we want to recognize them, because we were just so proud to have our first blimp in the Douglas Parade. So we gave a special effects award to the therapy tree. So we thank them for their efforts. But the next award, Best in Creativity, goes to Lowes of Douglas.
James Staub. James Staub.
I'm at your head. We're talking, we're talking. Where you going to be putting it?
Best musical performance goes to the Coffee Middle School Band.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yes.
All right, brother there.
Stay the faces across there.
There we go, we're good.
Little leg on it and step out just a little bit. Yeah, that's perfect. Y'all see I commissioned a leg there. Everybody see me, Leslie. Commissioner Pierce, the mayor made me step over a little. Then Commissioner Pearson moved over a little. There it is. All right, got it. All right. Congratulations. We're going to call it in case they're in the audience, but our overall winner of the parade this year was Premium Peanut. They're not here tonight, okay? So they're not here, we'll be sure to get it to them. Just leave them up there in that box that's...
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Ms. Pearson coming? Commissioner Pearson coming?
Yes, sir.
We'll give her a minute to get around. Great. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda... Consent Agenda items, as always, will turn it over to our city manager. He will go through those items placed on the Consent Agenda. Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Commission. We have seven items being considered on the Consent Agenda. We have the first item approved, item one approved, the December 10th minutes with the changes that discussed in the work session. Item two will be approved, the appointment to the Housing Authority Board. Item three, approved traffic coming devices for Frank Jackson Circle. Item four, approved the hangar lease for number two hangar for Brooks Aviation. Item five, approved the appointment to the Economic Development Authority. And item six, approved the alcoholic beverage license for Johnny's New Stout Pizza. Item seven, approved the alcoholic beverage license for Parasite Pizza. That's all the items in the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the work session items brought for discussion. I think we're just going to advertise?
Right.
Okay.
We have item two that was considered in the Consent Agenda item, but we also got to announce a vacancy for the Housing Authority Board, and Lynette will be handling that.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here to announce, not only to you all, but to the citizens, that the Housing Authority is advertising, we're advertising two upcoming vacancies for the regular board members, who terms are expiring January 2019, for a period of two weeks. Anyone that is interested in being on the Housing Authority Board, will need to come to City Hall and come to the City Clerk's Office and to receive, to get an application. If you have any questions, you can call me at 389-3405, and then I can talk to you in details regarding the qualifications and what they're looking for, and see if you'll be interested in serving on this committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda are staff comments. Ms. McCargill. Oh. Good evening, how are you doing?
Good evening, I'm good. How's everyone?
Good evening.
Thank you. Just a reminder, City Office will be closed Tuesday, January 1st, and observance of New Year's. Our next residential drop-off is Saturday, January 5th, 8:30 to 12:00 noon. Let's team up to clean up Douglas. We are accepted in 2019, 2020 Douglas Mayor's Youth Council applications until January 15th, 2019. For more information, call, please call Ms. Williams. The best contact number for her will be at here at City Hall, 384-3302. The Douglas Coffee County Team Court still needs youth volunteers. Meetings are the first Saturday of each month. For more information, please call Ms. Williams. And by the way, the next Team Court date is Saturday, January 5th, at the Coffee County Chef Department, six through, six through 12th grade. Translates holidays schedule. Translates will be closed Tuesday, January 1st, for New Year's. Trash collection will be on Monday, Wednesday through Friday. Douglas Utilities is offering the pilot program to kick off this service for all our customers. My usage prepaid customer will receive advantages not given to regular utility customers. No deposit is required. The initial startup fee goes toward, toward future use of the monthly utility bill. There are no disconnect or reconnect fees. There will be no service fees and no late fees. Customers can track their daily balance and pay as they go. To sign up to begin the program, customers should visit the Customer Care Center located here at City Hall. For more information, please call 384-3302. We have job opportunities that can be found on our website, City of Douglas, or you can apply here at City Hall, or you can call Community Development at 384-4555. For full event details, please visit cityofdouglas.com. This concludes the announcements. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the Mayor and Commission comments. Let's start out with Mr. Gallow. Let's see if we can try to get out of here at a reasonable time here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hope everybody had a very merry Christmas, and I wish everybody a happy and safe New Year. Want to say my thoughts and prayers are out with Commissioner Bob Moore, who is obviously not with us this evening. Many of you know, he's had some medical issues that he's getting addressed, but I want to let him know that we love him and his family, and we'll be glad to have him back, even if he is a little grumpy every once in a while. But he's, but we do love him and appreciate his service here and what he brings to our commission. Want to recognize the McClellan family. Many of you may know, Mr. Darrell McClellan passed away, I think it was last week. Unfortunately, I did not get the word about that when it happened. Many of you know, Darrell served many years here with the county as a 911 dispatcher, and he later went on, went back to school and was a registered nurse, served here at Coffee Regional and other places. He's the brother of Steve McClellan, that works with our city, and just outstanding family that we feel fortunate to be associated with, and we'll miss him, but just, you know, a man committed to serving his fellow men, and he'll be missed. In conjunction with that, I would like to thank all of our first responders out there and our emergency room and hospital staff. Many of you know, and we think about it, I've done it over the years, these men and women, when we're at home, eating turkey, opening presents, these men and women are out protecting us, taking care of our sick, making sure that everybody else is safe, and along with our military and our Coast Guard. You know, a thank you's not enough. We appreciate them and your service out there, and they miss time with their families, so we can be with ours, and we appreciate that. You may have, many of y'all may have noticed, we had another, we had a couple of officers. One in Louisville, Kentucky was killed in a DUI crash, I think it was on Christmas Eve, a mother of two children. We had another officer that was shot to death out in California the day after Christmas. You know, there are sacrifices that are involved that these men and women make, and we appreciate them. On a latter note, I had the opportunity to attend our annual football banquet, which unfortunately caused me to miss the chat and chew, but we appreciate the effort that our, our coaches and our parents are putting into that program and the support they're giving our young men. I believe it's helping these young men to develop the character and some of the overcoming some obstacles with their commitment to prepare and, and practicing to get out there and perform on the field. Many of you realize that since we met last time, the Ball State Blazers won a national championship in football. They're in Division Two. They defeated Ferris State. It was a nail-biter for sure, but Ball State pulled it out and wound up undefeated, with an undefeated season. They were 14-0. Also interesting to mention that two of the, two of those Ball State Blazers came from Coffee High School, Mr. Jamion Gaskin and Mr. Javonte Martin. In particular, Mr. Gaskin was voted Gulf Coast Conference freshman Defensive Player of the Year. Unfortunately, they, we, we all know, we missed out on the football championship last season, barely, but Mr. Gaskin and Mr. Martin, they got their championship this season, and with our hats off to them. On a personal note, I had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Gaskin at the, at the banquet, just a very well-spoken young man, as the mayor's alluded to. These young men are fine ambassadors for our city and our county, and we appreciate them and the work they're putting into those programs. Lastly, I want to thank our city staff, employees, and contractors. You know, we're, we're at the end of a year, and we appreciate the work that these men and women bring every day, their effort, their enthusiasm that they bring to serve our citizens and improve our city. We're a better community and a better place because of the efforts that they all put in, and I want to let y'all know that I appreciate you, and thank you for the work that you've been doing. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Pro temp?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just hope everyone had a blessed Christmas, and I just thank God that we're alive to see Christmas and live to see today. My prayers are with Commissioner Bob Moore, and also, we thank all the citizens that came out to the chat and chew on December the 17th at the Roundtree Center. It was very, very instrumental, very great. We got very, a lot of interesting ideas and things that we can improve as a city, and improve to make our city beautified, and there's different issues that we may not see that the citizens see.
Right.
And we thank them for coming to, you know, the chat and chew with that dialogue, because we stayed there pretty lengthy. We stayed at about 9:15 with concerns that were come from citizens, and we appreciate them for that. And also, I would like to say that we coming up to the New Year's, we ask everybody have a prosperous New Year as we go into 2019. And then in January in 2019, we will celebrate our Martin Luther King Celebration, which will be on January the 19th through the 21st. January the 19th will be at Gaines Chapel Missionary Baptist, I mean Gaines Chapel AME Church. We will have the breakfast that morning at 9:00 a.m. And then also, on the 20th, on the 20th, we will have the commemorative service of Dr. Martin Luther King at High Tower Memorial Temple, Pastor Renal Scott. And that, and the speaker for that day will be Reverend Dr. Beverly Glover out of Macon, Georgia. And also, on the 21st, we will have our Youth Expo that will be held at Central Square Gym, Gym A and Gym B. And we just inviting everyone out, we're selling t-shirts as normal, which are $12. You can see myself or any member of the MLK Committee. And we just want to make this a great success. We will have different colleges there, at the expo, we have different business owners, different vendors. We will have Clark University, Savannah University, we have South Georgia College, Wiregrass, Yocardi Healthcare, we have different providers, doctors, we have Dr. Shaylor. We have seminars going on that day. Our seminar speakers will be Mr. Jamion Gaskin, the Defensive Player, Defensive Freshman Player of the Year. He will be one of the keynote speakers of the seminar, and also, we will have Dr. Julius, I mean Attorney Junius Collins, and also, one of our very own, because all of those are from the City of Douglas. We will also have Dr. Shaylor Thomas, that comes from Douglas, Georgia, that practices at Darmody Family Medical Center over there in Fisher, Georgia. So for more information, you may contact me or any member of the Martin Luther King So for more information, you may contact me or any member of the Martin Luther King Committee, and that's all I have to say on tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I hope everyone had a merry Christmas, and let me thank Mr. Tim for coming out this afternoon addressing your issues about your community. We appreciate you coming out, addressing it all. Also, let's keep Commissioner Bob in our prayers as we go into New Year's, you know. The staff of the City of Douglas, I personally want to say thank you all for what you all do for the City of Douglas, because without you all, we wouldn't be here where we are at, you know, and I say thank you very much to each and everyone. Happy New Year. Thank you.
Commissioner Neil?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, like the rest of the group up here, I want to say we miss Mr. Bob very much, and he's kind of my, instead of my right arm, he's my left arm over here. Commissioner Pearson's moved down a little bit, I think, so she can see and hear better, but we, we sure miss him and wish him well in the New Year. And again, we were so blessed to all have a good Christmas and all have plenty to eat and plenty of places to go and activities and everything to fill our lives. I want to say thank you to Mr. John Glosson, he did a fabulous community-wide concert at First Methodist Church last Sunday morning, and the church was packed with people from all walks of life, and, and it was a beautiful service. And I want to say also that Douglas is going to be having a community-wide revival service, and if I understand correctly, I think it's going to be January sixth at Coffee Middle School. So please be, improve that and watch for information about that, and go out, let's go out and support these community-wide events as, as people come to our community, we want to welcome them. And we want to say best wishes to everybody in the New Year, and again, if, if we can be of help to any of you, please let us know, we want to make our community the best possible place to live and, and, and work in two thousand nineteen. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, first of all, state that, well, first of all, I'd like to say that I pray that everyone in our city and county had a good Christmas, and I hope that everybody had enough food to eat. We know that some people are less fortunate than others, but that's one thing I think we do pretty good in Douglas Coffee County, is we try to provide people with food. We have Pastor Don who provides food every year, and various other agencies who do the same thing. We have minister Jennifer Gifford, she does the same thing, as well as we have Reverend Lynette Richardson, who is also getting on board with providing food for individuals. And it's, it's, you know, I was thinking the other day, when we had our Christmas dinner, I mean, and we just had an abundance of food, and my heart kind of went out for, for those who, you know, like the homeless that we have here who might not have such an abundance of food. So let's try to continue Douglas Coffee County working together to make sure that we can try to make sure that everybody has food to eat, because we are supposed to be our brother's keeper. Also, the Chat and Chew, it was very interesting, which was held on December the seventeenth at Roundtree Center. It was very informative, I thank the people, the citizens who, who came out and participated in it. You know, we're only as great as our citizens. We count on you all to let us know what's important, what your problems and concerns are, and then we can go from there. So if you don't get involved to let us know what matters to you, we cannot be very effective in trying to be a good governmental entity to try to take care of Douglas, the City of Douglas. So I thank you all for giving us your input. Some people think that citizens shouldn't come to the mayor council, I beg to differ with that. I feel, I believe that that's why I was elected, for my citizens to make me aware of what's important to them. So please, 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 at any time, citizens, whether you are in my district or not, let me know what your concerns are. The other thing that I would like to mention quickly is about the junk drop-off. I was looking for that date again, I had written it down. I believe it's January the sixth, if I'm not mistaken, or the fifth.
Fifth.
The fifth? Okay, January the fifth. We have junk drop-off, and citizens, if you have mattresses, chesters, whatever, you can, on, on the dates that we provide, we can, you can take those items to the junk city's junk drop-off. So there's no reason for anybody to go and put a mattress side, along the side of the road to make our community look bad. So it's no excuse for how people just take stuff and just throw it aside the road. Let's try to work on keeping our community clean. That's what our code enforcement, that's one of the things that, that they're trying to do, they are trying to help keep Douglas beautiful, and in order to do that, they need the citizens' support. So please, whenever we have these free junk drop-offs, take your items to the site and, and put them there. Let's see, want to encourage everybody to please attend and engage in the MLK activities. We know that Dr. King has done so much for our country. You know, we would not be where we are today had he not gave his life so that equality could actually, you know, come to fruition, and I know we're not there yet, but it's a lot better than, than where we, where we came from. So on that note, I'd just like to say that everybody, I wish that you have a very prosperous and safe New Year. Safe, please be safe. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. My comments are as follows. I've been in contact with Mr. Moore's son throughout the weekend, and Mr. Moore is doing better, however, Mr. Moore thinks he's doing much better, and his son told me that he woke up and he blew a kiss at his wife, so.
Oh.
They've been married sixty-three years, that's a long time. We're going to put her in for some type of city medal.
She deserved it.
But one of the things I always try to express to individuals is that the mayor and commission, we're a team. We're a team. One of our members is sick, and, you know, we're not whole. We're not whole. I mean, we have enough to assemble, to have a quorum, to conduct city's business, but I miss Mr. Moore, I miss his comments, I miss the conversation, and I pray that he gets well. Also, his wife, Barbara, sixty-three years, it's a long time, sixty-three, it's a long time to see someone that you've been with for sixty-three years to fall ill. So please keep Ms. Barbara, Mr. Moore, and the family in your prayers. My next thing is Christmas. As I said, with Mr. Moore being in the hospital, I was sort of in a little fog there, and I had a great Christmas, I ate too much, but I want people to understand, I saw this on Facebook, it's amazing that we can be more tolerable, we can be nicer during the Christmas season, but as soon as January first come about, it's business as usual.
Yeah.
I would like to extend a challenge to the citizens of Douglas. Let's see if we can be a little nicer throughout the year. Be a little bit more mindful of somebody else's point of view. You don't always have to agree, but I do think we need to be able to have a civilized conversation and treat individuals with respect. It's just the, the common human thing to do. Special note to all the gentlemen of the City of Douglas and Coffee County, if your gift was not up to par on Christmas, Valentine's Day is coming. Now, if your gift was not up to par, she has told you what she wanted, so you need to get your little kitty to the side and start saving some money. Valentine's Day is approaching, we about, what, fifty days out? You need to make sure you get the butt together. The next thing is MLK. Pastor King done a, a lot of great things, and a lot of us are benefactors of that movement. As I say often, I get to be the mayor of the City of Douglas, I get to ride on the road of civil liberties. I did not cut down any trees, I didn't unearth any stumps, I didn't level the gra, the dirt or grade the dirt or put that pavement down, but I get an opportunity to ride on a smooth road, and I feel indebted to that cause, and we must always remember, and let me say this right here, Dr. King, and I've read a lot of his writings and his speeches and this and that, Dr. King only wanted productive citizens, be a Christian, be a Christian, get an education, be a productive member of society. That was about it. That was about it. And my thing is this right here, we challenge ourselves every day to have, to be a, a voice of unity, but unity is an action word. I mean, you can tell your wife you love her all day, you can tell her you love her all day, every now and then, you got to show her something, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, look, I don't like scary movies, and I tell you I don't like, what's that, bird whatever?
I turned it off. I turned it off.
My wife talking about, let's watch this. No, do not want to watch that.
Me either.
Want to watch that? But guess what? I'm probably going to end up watching it, because love is an action word, and it also, you have to compromise a little bit.
That's for sure.
You know, when we talk about Dr. King, we talk about, you know, ending segregation, civil rights and this and that. You know, with the holiday season upon us, and Commissioner Gallowen spoke to this about our young men and women in the armed forces. But I also want people to understand that the military was one of the, was the first organization to actually desegregate. I believe it was President Truman, Executive Order Number 147, I might be off on that, but, because I gave a speech on it once before, and President Truman tasked a group of individuals to go out through the military to see how African-American soldiers were being treated. At the conclusion of that review, the officer in charge said, "Mr. President, it's horrible. It's horrible." And with the stroke of a pen, with the stroke of a pen, the next morning, there were no longer a black barracks or a white barracks, they were all integrated. It's amazing sometimes what government can do when government sometimes is pressed upon their heart to just do what's right. The other thing is, I remember Vietnam Vet told me this, he said, "Remember when you're in, on guard duty, what you're guarding is our way of life, regardless of where you're at. There are individuals that are sitting over there cold or hot, eating out of cardboard box, having to sleep, bullets flying, all so we can assemble here and carry on the city's business. So Sunday, you can go to the church of your choice, worship the way that you want to worship." So always be mindful of those soldiers, if you see a soldier out eating, if you can afford, say thank you and maybe purchase a meal for him. My last thing is this right here, as we have talked about in great detail about cleaning up our city, I do believe that we have to strike a balance on that, but we also have to be mindful of that when we are invoking something new on the city, is to listen to both sides and try to come somewhere in the middle so it doesn't alienate one group of individuals and reward another group. What we have to do, President Obama said, compromise is not a bad word, just means you didn't get everything you wanted, and I didn't get everything I wanted, but we walked away with something.
Right.
And we still walked away as friends, as comrades. So as we go through this transition, it's just growing pains, that's all it is. We're going to make adjustments, and we're going to move on. With that being said, that concludes my remarks. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
One thing I want to say, because you brought up a great point about our loss in Mr. Garland Thompson this week, okay? We buried someone that I consider a legend in Douglas and Coffee County, somebody who's been a great role model. Mr. Garland Thompson was ninety years old, and his funeral service was, was absolutely amazing, his attributes, the things he's accomplished here for Douglas and Coffee County. I know we've talked a lot about Dr. King on a large scale, but Garland Thompson, what he's done for Douglas and Coffee County, with Fortune 500 companies, with awards, with recognition, and things in his lifetime, and may we all strive to be more like him, so.
Yes, he's done a great, a great deal.
He was very humble, wasn't he? He was a kind servant, so, thank y'all.
For his services.
Thank you for reminding me.
To the family. Ms. Mayor, I have just a couple more things that I'd like to mention. Thank you for that, Commissioner McNeil, about Mr. Thompson. I'd like to also inform the community that to keep the Brown-Lott family, Brown and Lott families in your prayers. My neighbor, Ms. Yvonne Lott, she lost her sister, Ms. Ruby Brown Kittles, and the funeral services will be in Miami on this Friday, I think tomorrow or Saturday, and then they're going to bring her body back here to Douglas, and she will be funeralized here in Douglas on next Saturday, and Harold's Funeral Home will have her body. So let's keep them in our prayers. And the other thing that I want to say, Mr. Mayor, with what you were saying and what I've said, and what we often say so many times about people not having, being less fortunate we are, not having food or whatever, over the last couple of weeks, I have been researching a grant, Ms. Henderson, and I will be getting with you and the city manager, and it might be something that we'll be able to take advantage of here in the City of Douglas. So I'll be sharing that with y'all after, after the first of the year, this grant that I found, researched, because I've, I've been offered a position in Waycross as a, as a director, it will only be a part-time position, and I will be working with grants and stuff to, to get projects in, in various communities. So in, in preparing to do that job, I ran across this grant that I think will also help us here in the City of Douglas and Coffee County with the homeless, the hungry, and, and this, that, and the other, but I'll share that with y'all. So that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Do we have an executive session?
I thought, I thought we was having an executive session to, to discuss the things that you emailed us.
I just gave you an email, and it wasn't nothing really.
You said that we would discuss it tonight.
Which item, which, the?
Find it.
It's in my iPad.
Put them on the ones that are not through with the situation, so they've asked us not to speak to them.
Oh yeah, that's right, you're right, I'm, I'm sorry.
When, when you have more information, it's when you told us you'd have.
But I thought you was going to talk tonight.
Yeah, they're not, they're not, they're not there yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
We're good?
Yes, sir, thank you.
At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
It's been motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, stand the judge.